Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Meeting. And I would like to introduce the people here. Deb Shore, Commissioner, and Larry Hutkins, Commissioner. And to my right is Commissioner Todd Wilchin, also the Vice Chair, and Commissioner Bill Avery. Welcome your attendance, and for those who are tuning in, thanks so much for being here, for tuning in. Now, will you join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. And, Mr. Chair, will you begin the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
Let's move to second that we approve the minutes of the last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes and one abstention. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through January 19th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's move to second that we approve all claims processed through today. Any corrections or additions? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are special presentations. Commissioners' Award of Excellence. The December winner is Jocelyn McSwine. Corrections and a category of safety. And I have the nomination here that I'll read. Jocelyn McSwine has been selected as Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for December 2015. Jocelyn works as a correctional officer and began working for the county on August 26th, 2013. She was nominated by Jane Voebril, Corrections Lieutenant in the category of safety. In her nomination, Lieutenant Voebril states, "On May 28th, 2015, Officer Jocelyn McSwine was assigned to the S Housing Unit Control Center. The floor officer for that area was on break, so Officer McSwine was relying on cameras, monitors, and intercoms to supervise her area in between 20-minute rover rounds. Officer McSwine noticed that the blankets to the bed of Cell 12 had been removed. She described a gut instinct that told her that this was suspicious. She attempted to communicate with the inmate via the intercom. She received no response but heard an unusual noise. Rover was entering her area at that time, so she suggested the argument of Cell 12 be checked on. The roving officer discovered that the inmate was attempting suicide by hanging, and she's able to take the necessary actions to prevent this. If not for Officer McSwine's diligent observation, this inmate may have suffered permanent injury or death. Her handling of this situation resulted in timely response from her fellow staff and very likely saved the inmate's life. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Jocelyn McSwine with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of December 2015."
Great. First of all, thanks a lot, Mike, for the corrections. Jocelyn is, again, in a very difficult area in S Pod. Being able to take that and not overlook what she saw was different on that day, and I think it's great that the county board recognizes her work on this part, so.
Jocelyn, anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to thank Lieutenant Voebril for nominating me and Officer Regina Larson for her safety and helping me out when I needed her as soon as possible. I would also like to thank the department for the training that I received to be a correctional officer in safety and security. I would like to also thank Mr. Ehrher for helping me out and making sure that I can be the best correctional officer I can be. I would also like to thank the rest of the officers who responded at quick, balanced, and notice. That's...
I believe she has a relative here, an uncle, if I didn't do this?
I have my Uncle Larry back there, and I see some of my fellow staff sitting back there as well.
Very good.
It's nice, isn't it?
Jocelyn, on behalf of the county, I would like to present you with this award, and this is in recognition of your alertness, your diligence, and the team effort that you have done. I mean, you are certainly a wonderful example of a person who takes the job seriously and will accept the tenement of everyone. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next are the County Sheriff 2016 Employee Recognition Awards.
Terry, as you're coming forward, I know we have some young people here in the audience. I'd invite them to come up and have a seat if they'd like to join us up on the dais during the presentation. We've got a couple of extra chairs. You want to come on up? There's one over by Bill. We'll put one here. Come on up.
Well, that's a great idea.
Come on up right here. He can be Commissioner for the day. Here we go.
Have a seat. There's one over there by Bill. Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity to make these presentations before you and in this public setting. As you know, every year, internally, we have an awards committee within the sheriff's office. We receive nominations throughout the year for exemplary service by employees, and then the committee makes decisions on which awards to present to whom. The first of those awards, we also review actions from citizens who have been exemplary as well. And the first of our awards is a citizen's certificate of merit for Crystal Lewis, who works at the Casey Store down on 148th and Highway 2. Crystal can't be here today. Oh, you are here. Please, okay, come up. I got an email that she wasn't going to be able to be here and that her store manager would be receiving, but Crystal is here. And last, there you are, okay. Crystal was working at the store and a bandit man came into the Casey's, and actually, he was being scammed on the IRS scam that you've all heard about. He was told he needed to pay money for back taxes. He went to the Casey Store to purchase the prepaid debit cards, which is the typical tactic on these scammers. He was in the process of getting those cards and had actually given one of the numbers to the cards when Crystal recognized what was going on with this man and knew that he was being scammed, immediately called the debit card number, blocked the transaction, and was able to save this man from losing $2,000 in this scam. So, a great example of people watching out for people. But for her quick actions, the victim would have been out $2,000, and that money is virtually untraceable. So, we really appreciate Crystal's heads up and good work, and we want to present you with this plaque. Thank you. Wording, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think this is really great that you guys recognize us and what Casey does. I feel that even if I wasn't at the store that day, any of our employees would have done the same. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Well, thank you so much for your alertness.
The next award is a lifesaving award for Deputy Sheriff Barry Barnett. Barry's here, and I think we have somebody on the podium that's connected there as well. On February 5th last year, at about 6:15 in the morning, Deputy Barnett and a couple of other deputies were detailed to a woman in labor down on Highway 77 near Saltillo. While en route, dispatch was rilling information and said that two babies had been born. Neither one was breathing. Upon arrival, one baby was gray in color, the other red in color. Barry got some good information from the parents regarding the birth order of the children, began sternum rubs on both babies, and to stimulate their breathing. Shortly after, both babies gasped for air and began breathing. He refocused his attention on the firstborn, continuing to stimulate the chest, but received little response. Mom and both babies were transported to Bryan Medical Center for treatment. Unfortunately, two days later, Savannah, the second-born baby, died from medical complications. The firstborn, however, Caleb, was discharged and is home with his mom and dad. Because of Deputy Barnett's quick actions, he was able to extend the life of both of these babies, and without his response, there's a good chance neither one of the babies would have survived. So, for that, I want to present Barry with the lifesaving award, which is a certificate for him, and also receives an award and a ribbon to wear on his uniform on a daily basis. So, Barry, congratulations, and thank you. You see, this is not a first lifesaving award.
First off, thank you to the county commissioners for everything that you do for the sheriff's office. We truly appreciate everything that you do for us. Sheriff, thank you. Nice award. The awards committee, I'd also like to thank Deputy Worster, who actually nominated me. Being nominated by peers, awesome. We're out there in the trenches together. We know what each other goes through and stuff, so that's great. I'd also like to thank my family. A bunch of them showed up. My wife surprised me and got in touch with a bunch of my family members to be here. My mom and dad, my brother, my grandma, my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, my son, Eddie, and my daughter, Coco. They helped me through everything with my job. I mean, we, as you know, law enforcement, you can have great days and you can have bad days. And this award just helps me with kind of the way where the light's been on law enforcement in the recent year or two here, that it just shows that no matter what we do, we'll drop whatever we're doing if we can save a life, and that's our number-one priority. So, thank you.
Is that one of those awards?
Yes, I am.
This is your second?
Yeah. Yeah, about six years ago, it was a 10-month-old that basically fell headfirst into a toilet and drowned, and I was the first responder there. Tried everything I could. He ended up not surviving, but, so this is kind of a nice thing for me, so.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service. You bet. Next is our civilian employee of the year, and it's Administrative Aid Judy Lewis-Carnes. Judy has been the administrative aide for the sheriff's office since 2004. Some of her accomplishments for 2015 were the arduous task of rewriting and reviewing our standard operating procedures. And if you've ever seen our book, it's about yay thick, and it's a lot of policies. That task was completed in June of last year, in large part because of Judy's knowledge, her expertise, and her guidance. And she understands how important those standard operating procedures are to our agency. In March of 2015, one of our account specialists retired, and to alleviate some of the workload of her fellow employees, she volunteered to take on the payroll processing part of that position, enabling a restructure of the remaining positions to create efficiencies within that division. In addition, she provides leadership to the employees of the sheriff's office to example. Her work ethic, coupled with the pride in her job performance, is impressive. While it's difficult to put into words the contribution she makes to our office on a daily basis, these examples show why the awards committee selected Judy as our civilian employee of the year. And besides that, Judy keeps Jeff and I in line on a daily basis. She makes sure we get to where we're supposed to be, when we're supposed to be there, and without her, it'd be a difficult task. So, for her exemplary work, I want to present a plaque to Judy, naming her the civilian employee of the year.
I really appreciate the confidence that they have in me. I enjoy my work, and it's easy to do a good job when you have good bosses and good friends and good peers among you. And everyone has just always been really kind to me, and I try and reciprocate in kind, and I do love my work and my job. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for your work.
Next is our gallantry star for bravery, Deputy Sheriff Jeff Mohler. We have a number of awards, as I said, and gallantry star is the second highest award for bravery that our office presents. This is Deputy Sheriff Jeff Mohler. On September 22nd, Deputy Mohler was assigned for that day to our Civil Division to assist in serving subpoenas and divorce papers, those kinds of things. At about 1:00 PM, a Lincoln Police Officer made a traffic stop on K Street between 12th and 13th, I'm sorry, between 11th and 12th, where a backseat passenger had fled that scene, and the officer could see a pistol stuck in the waistband of the suspect's trousers. That information was broadcast over the radio, and Deputy Mohler, who was just leaving the sheriff's office, responded to that general area. Deputy Mohler and a deputy U.S. Marshal, who was assigned to our task force in separate vehicles, spotted the suspect running near the west side of the Capitol lawn. Both got out of their vehicles and gave chase on foot. The suspect was confronted while waving a .45 caliber pistol on South 14th Street, just south of J Street, Centennial Mall. This occurred in a, I'm sorry, Lincoln Mall. This occurred in a heavily populated area, both residential and business. Despite commands to drop the weapon, the suspect began to turn to point the weapon in the direction of Jeff Mohler and the deputy U.S. Marshal. Both officers opened fire, disabling the suspect, taking him into custody. Later investigation determined the suspect had a fully-loaded .45 caliber semi-automatic pistol, and he had two fully-loaded spare magazines with him. That weapon had been determined to be stolen earlier in last year. The actions of Deputy Mohler clearly prevented any officers or civilians from being injured or killed by the suspect, who presented a credible deadly threat. The gallantry star is the sheriff's office's second highest award for bravery in the face of an armed adversary who is a major threat to the welfare of the community or the deputy. For his actions, we want to award Deputy Jeff Mohler the gallantry star for distinguished That award also comes with a ribbon to wear on his uniform on a daily basis.
Thank you. I don't know what else more I can say. I think Barry said most of it. I'm very fortunate to work for the sheriff's office, have a lot of good friends, a lot of good support. You know, when you go through something like this, it's already a stressful situation, but then to have the support that we had from Sheriff Wagner all the way down, you know, I'd like to thank Tommy Trotter for nominating me for this award. He wasn't able to be here. I think he's off on vacation today. Very fortunate to work with the people I work with. People came over to my house that night after it was over. You know, Barry was one of them, Sergeant Trotter, Jerry Witty, I think, is back there. His wife even brought us dinner, so I thought that was pretty cool. I'd like to thank my family for being here, Mom, Dad.
Anyway.
John Paul.
Hello.
Yeah. There we go.
You talk about your family and listening to what you're saying. You've got two families. You've got the ones sitting there, and then you've got the ones all dressed in brown. So, thank you for representing them and all of Lancaster County with such valor.
And I would also like to say, too, that, you know, your service is certainly noteworthy, and it is noteworthy, too, because of the family that serves also, because they are always in support of you, and there are difficult times. And so, thank you for everything that you do in support of our law enforcement.
I'm good now. I'd like to thank my wife, too. And also my son, and also Coco, right? Coco and John play together on a regular basis, so.
And Larry?
Well, she was just aching for attention here. She said, "Don't forget me."
Yes, I see you, Coco.
You bet. Just want to thank you for putting your life on the line. That's what you do every day. Lots of people, you know, they'll cuss a cop, but when we need help, where do we go? We go to law enforcement, and we thank you and all of the law enforcement people for putting your life on the line. You know, you've got families, you've got considerations, but you try to save a life whenever you can. Sometimes, if you have to take one, that's service, too, and we appreciate your commitment. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. What got me the most is all the support, so that's what I appreciate. Thank you.
Normally, and this year's no exception, we also have a Deputy Sheriff of the Year that we present an award to. This year, our Deputy Sheriff's Award is receiving the award for their service in narcotics as an undercover operative, and so we chose not to make that award in public, and so I just want to let you know that we are making an award. It'll be done more privately in our office for that work that was being done there as well. So, with that, I really appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation. As you can tell, it's pretty exciting for all the recipients and for the children, and thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks for joining us today. Okay. Well, thanks so much for your assistance, guys. That was great.
Number four is new business. Four A is a special events permit application from Scott Weiscamp to hold the 2016 Animal Run on February 6th, 2016.
I will move approval with the notation that we still require the certificate of insurance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this special events permit application with the proviso that the certificate of insurance be attached. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore? Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is approval of the Lancaster County Board of Committee assignments for 2016.
Move approval.
I would like to make an addition under my column. It should be listed, they serve on the NACO Board of Directors with, I guess, Executive Committee in parentheses underneath.
I would move approval with that correction, her addition.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the committee assignments as corrected. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is approval of the annual Nebraska Department of Agriculture report from the Lancaster County Weed Control Department.
Well, good morning. This may not be quite as exciting as the law enforcement awards, but I'll try. First, good morning, Chair Amundson and members of the County Board of Commissioners. I'm Brent Meyer, Lancaster County Weed Superintendent. I'm here today to approve the annual reports. We have five reports every year that are due by the Nebraska Department of Agriculture. And first, you know, I'll give you just a little, couple of questions I always get as a weed superintendent. First, why do we even have a weed department? Does the law say we have to? Yeah, it does. But the reason we have a weed department and the way we see ourselves is we're out there actually protecting the land values of Lancaster County. Noxious weeds don't stay on one person's property. They'll move to another person's property and devalue that property as well. So, we're kind of an agency that's helping protect the property taxes for Lancaster County, and where do we get our funding from? It's from property taxes. So, once property's infested with noxious weeds, the property value goes down, and the tax value goes down. So, that's a little bit of what we do. And the five annual reports presented, these are the staff meeting. I'll just hit a couple of the highlights real quick this morning. First is our control plan, and this is kind of our little book of what we're going to live by the next year. This is how our procedures are going to work for the coming year. Our three main goals for Lancaster County Weed Department. Goal one is always prevention. You know, the earlier we can protect and prevent noxious weeds from infesting property, the less the landowner's going to have to spend to get rid of those noxious weeds, and the better the property tax value is going to be on that property. So, we always want to prevent, and we call that early detection, rapid response, EDRR. So, if we can detect it early and respond rapidly, you know, we can get these weed infestations while they're still small. Our second goal is always education and outreach. That makes our job easier. The more we can educate the public on invasive weeds and the harm they can do to their property and the cost that's going to be associated with that, the easier our job becomes. So, we do a lot, a lot of work on education and outreach. And then finally, we want to manage the infestations that we already have. So, we want to manage the larger infestations, contain them to the folks' property that they exist on, so they don't spread to the neighbor's property. So, those are always our three main goals, and then at the end of the day, we're law enforcement. So, if the public does not take care of those, they refuse to take care of them, you know, that's why we're there, to protect the neighbor's properties. And so, we can do the enforcement on those properties if we have to. That's always our last resort, that we want to do enforcement. We always... We always try to work with people to get a management plan on their noxious weeds first. But at the end of the day, if we have to do enforcement, that's what we're there for. One of the exciting things that we belong to is weed management areas. And these are groups of folks that don't make any extra money by belonging to these weed management areas. There's landowners, county, state, and federal agencies all on these. And it's more of a regional-based approach to contain invasives, because our noxious weeds don't stop at the Lancaster County line or on Salt Creek. They flow into the Platte River from there. So, it's a cooperative effort. Those have been really good for Lancaster County. It's been able to bring some grant money in for the residents of Lancaster County to control some invasive species that they wouldn't otherwise have, so. And then, on our infestation report, and that's pretty much it on our control plan, you know, that's kind of what we're going to do in the coming year. Our infestation report, I would like to highlight, but I'm always good about coming to the county board and telling you how bad things are. Well, let's tell a good story for once, okay? I mean, honestly, statewide, about 97% of our state land in Nebraska is non-infested. So, that's a pretty good number. We need to tell that story more. But if this will come up, take a look at this graph. As you can see, in 2007, when purple loose trife was made a noxious weed, that's the number on the left here. 490 locations of purple loose trife. Currently, we deal with 24 locations this past year. So, I talked about early detection rapid response. I think that particular weed really shows what happens. If you can get on a problem early, educate the public, and then work to control that, you know, those are numbers that don't lie. That's what we see out there. Now, the central part of the state isn't quite as fortunate. We learned from their mistakes that purple loose trife got too widespread before they started to control it. So, they're in the maintain type of area where we're in the early detection rapid response. Also, one more. And these are weeds that the general public typically doesn't know about a lot. They know a lot about musthistle, leafy spurge, those type of things. This is salt cedar. And while these numbers are smaller, the first year, we only had three infestations. In 2010, it grew to as many as eight. This last year, we have found one infestation of salt cedar in Lancaster County. So, you know, early detection, rapid response. We can possibly eradicate this plant from this part of the state before it becomes a widespread problem. On Lake McConaughey and Harlan Reservoir, they've literally sprayed thousands and thousands of acres of salt cedar out there. So, again, it's been good that we've got on that early, and I thank the county board for their support. Also, we put TSL on our noxious weed list in Lancaster County last year with the same theory in mind, that if we can get on this plant early, we can eradicate it from Lancaster County before it becomes widespread. And that's two of the reports. The other reports, one is just an activity report of the, it's kind of a breakdown of what we did last year. We also have the board roster, which is just so the Department of Agriculture knows who to contact. And then, we have our budget report. So, if there's any questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I would ask the board to approve those today.
Well, you have done a marvelous job in eradicating these weeds, you know, I mean, really, and controlling them, so we really appreciate that.
I will move approval of the Annual Nebraska Department of Agriculture Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this report. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Four D is consideration of a letter of support regarding the East Bypass.
Well, good morning, Commissioners Kyle Fisher here with the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. Appear before you because what you see in front of you, which again is a draft, and Pam can come on up, I see her making her way there. Clearly, this is a draft statement awaiting approval from more than this board. I would give you options if you wanted today to wait until your Thursday morning meeting, if you wanted to consider it again, if you feel comfortable doing this today, if you like the language, by all means, approve it. That will help us. But again, as you see at the bottom, there are some other folks that are involved in this coalition that Commissioner Hudkins was part of. We just had a brief meeting last week, Pam as well. And we said we'd draft a letter of support for the East Beltway prior to an open house that is Thursday, that the state is hosting regarding the second tenure cycle of the Build Nebraska Act. And so, on behalf of Lincoln, Lancaster County, our business groups, a number of people, we wanted to support that. Again, there won't be any major structural changes that I would see to this, but we are awaiting, I'll have a caveat, that we are awaiting approval from some of those folks at the bottom, so.
Yes. Larry, Commissioner Hudkins.
Todd attended this meeting and so did, was going to attend this meeting and couldn't, so I sat in. And Pam Dingman was there as well. And I think the upshot of this is, is the take a look for the next 10 years for the future. I think it behooves us to be in support of this, so that they can see that we're interested in future projects. This really doesn't delineate any particular thing, it just asks that they can make us part of the consideration. I think Engineer Dingman's got some comments.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I really think it's imperative for our future that we boldly step forward at this time and ask for this project, at least the preliminary design, to be considered in this next 10-year plan. It's very important for the growth of our city and the growth of our county. And I think that the East Beltway was originally laid out in 1960, 1962, Commissioner Hudkins?
That's correct.
And so, I mean, I think that, you know, we're more than 50 years later, and so, the time has definitely come, when we're talking about a project that, quite frankly, is, before Kyle and I at least were born, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Larry wasn't even on the board yet.
Amazing, there was a time, right?
Yeah.
So, I have passion for this project, and I really think it needs to be included in this 10-year plan, that we start going on it. You know, it will take a significant amount of time to get through the new environmental standards and study the corridor again, and now is the time to start that.
Okay, Commissioner Shore.
Kyle, a question. The Director and the Governor have talked about the projects will be weighted based upon economic impact. Do you have any specifics or any idea how that might be measured, or is that part of what will be occurring as part of the discussion on Thursday?
That's my impression, is that it will be discussed, I guess, more in detail on Thursday. You know, the Director was kind enough to appear in front of a chamber audience late last year and basically talked about the economic impact being the main factor. We haven't seen any details. You know, there was some discussion too about waiting until after the presentation on Thursday to submit a letter and what that means. If you guys want to approve this and we get enough approvals, we'll submit the letter before Thursday and then adjust as we need. But I do think the initial work done by some of our independent firms would show that we meet the criteria.
And I would just like to add to that, you know, the criteria set forth in the Nebraska Transportation Innovation Act, which is LB 960, it still says in the bill that that criteria is yet to be defined. And so, but obviously, we want to keep following that.
Commissioner Wilchun.
Yeah, and as Larry had indicated, I had every intention of attending last Thursday's meeting, but I've been struggling with some respiratory issues. But I'm grateful that Larry was able to attend. And to follow up on the comments that Pam made, she talked about the importance of this project for the city of Lincoln and the county of Lancaster, but I think it's also very important to the state of Nebraska. I think it's a corridor for southeast Nebraska with a lot of the transportation issues that we have in southeast Nebraska. You have a lot of industry that depends on the connectivity of our highways. And so, I think, you know, if you talk to a lot of business leaders over the years, you know, there was actually a debate about what was more important to the city of Lincoln and the state, was it the South Beltway or the East Beltway? I think they're both equally important. And so, I think this is a good plan. I think it's something that we need to be supportive of. And I don't know if it would be helpful if we would possibly be able to attend Thursday's meeting as well.
Yeah, I think that's fun, you know, it's always the more the merrier, as the saying goes. I can get you guys some information if you don't have. I have a letter from the department, from the Director, kind of outlining times, and it talks about the four meetings. And so, I mean, all the support it can get on Thursday would be great. You know, I don't know what the state's timeline is for setting definitive priorities for the second 10 years, but we got to get started.
What time is that meeting on Thursday?
It's either 1:00 to 3:00 or 3:00 to 5:00. Let me double check before I tell you here.
It is 1:00 to 3:00. Now, please keep in mind that this is a series of four different meetings around the site, so, around the state. So, of course, the meeting in Ashland is the closest to us, but I think there's still another couple of meetings after that.
This is also the time that we have our strategic planning meeting.
And that's good, because while we're having our strategic planning meeting, Pam is planning to be there. This board, throughout the years, has made a significant investment in the East Beltway. And Commissioner Hare worked very, very hard, and we designated a route clear back in 2002 and started protecting that corridor. And of course, the county board does own land at the intersection I-8N where this proposed East Bypass would go through. Just having been in Orlando last week, we're one of the few cities our size that doesn't have a ring road around Lincoln. Most cities, you can go out and go around and come in much quicker than you can go across, and I think that would be the way in Lincoln as well. And it's going to be, you know, sometime before this gets established, but if we don't establish a priority, these funds will go elsewhere. So, I think it's imperative. With that, I will move that we join the signatures on this letter and support it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we offer our support in this letter of support. So, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and the County Sheriff to award a purchase order to Anderson Ford Lincoln Mercury Mazda for one Ford utility vehicle from the state of Nebraska, contract 143560, or OC. The total cost of the purchase order is $28,904.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, County Sheriff. Just by way of explanation, the money for this vehicle's coming out of our forfeited asset fund, and so, no general tax dollars going for this vehicle. And that vehicle's going to be used for the Highway Interdiction Project.
I move approval of the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this request. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and the County Sheriff to award a sole source purchase order to WatchGuard Video for an in-car video camera system, related equipment, hardware, and software from the HGAC by contract EF 04-15. The total amount of all orders is $39,270.
As you know, every one of our patrol cars is equipped with a mobile video. It records both forward and back and that kind of thing. This additional mobile video is for that cruiser above. Majority of that will be paid for with general budget dollars and some of the balance will be paid for with asset forfeiture funds.
Move on.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we approve this recommendation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Sheriff. Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Sheriff, earlier today, we approved the animal, 2016 Animal Run Special Events Permit.
Yes.
It's a charity run every year, and if I remember correctly, this year, they are designating the funds to...
Our K-9 program.
To the K-9 program, so.
That's right. I'm sorry, I was going to let you know that, just from a disclosure perspective, because we approved the permit, we recommended approval of the permit, notwithstanding us being the beneficiary of their benevolence. But we are going to be receiving the proceeds from that event this year for our K-9 program.
I just thought it was worth mentioning, and I'll be there. Will you be there to run?
I'll give you a, go get them.
Four G is license renewal application with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for operation of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center. The county will pay $250 for the renewal license.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the renewal application for the operation of Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a contract between Lancaster County, the city of Lincoln, the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission, and ASH Fire and Safety for Fire Alarm Panel Inspection, Testing, and Repair. Term of agreement is one year from the date of execution by all parties.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a contract between Lancaster County, the city of Lincoln, the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission, and NICO Security for Fire Alarm Panel Inspection, Testing, and Repair. Term of agreement is one year from the date of execution by all parties.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this contract for the Fire Alarm Panel Inspection, Testing, and Repair. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four J is a contract between Lancaster County, the city of Lincoln, and Language Link LLC Interpreter Services for onsite interpreter services on an as-needed basis. Term of the contract is four years from the date of execution. Cost to the county is not to exceed $15,000 per year.
Second.
Would you like, yeah, an explanation?
Gwen Thorp, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. This is, I'm excited to have this contract in front of you today. This allows for video, audio, and in-person interpreting 24 hours a day, 365, kind of to round out our menu of interpretive services that our agencies might need from time to time. So, this is going to be very helpful.
How will that work?
Actually, kind of like FaceTime almost, that's simplifying it. But if you need sign language interpretation, you can get somebody on the other end who's medically or legally kind of qualified to interpret. You can also use a phone if there's a language that you need, and so, you have some great communication, and it's pretty much available immediately. You just call them, and we have a code and tell them what kind of interpretation services you need, and they get somebody on the line and you're ready to go. So, 24/7 operations, this can be very helpful.
Okay, very good.
We'll get a motion in a second.
Oh, the motion, okay, please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a contract between Lancaster County and Cable Guys Communications, Inc. for phase two of cable supply and installation in the Lancaster County courts. Work will begin as soon as possible after execution of the contract, and will be completed 10 days after notice to proceed. Cost to the county is $15,388.
I move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this contract with Lancaster County and Cable Guys Communication. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
4L is a grant contract between Lancaster County and Families Inspiring Families in the amount of $9,000 to provide wraparound training. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director. And wraparound training basically will, the Families Inspiring Families will contract with certified trainers to provide the wraparound training to service providers in the area. Wraparound allows youth to stay in the home. It really focuses on finding those external supports that people maybe usually wouldn't think about. Neighbors, coaches, that kind of thing, where youth can find mentors and really build upon those skills and that relationship. So, this would provide that. There's also a piece in there that allows for continued monitoring of fidelity to the program. So, the evaluator that Families Inspiring Families contracts with will oversee then, once the trainers go out and try to facilitate the wraparound process.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
4M is a grant contract between Lancaster County and the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln Lancaster County in the amount of $15,000 for the Power Hour program. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
Power Hour is housed at Park Middle School, and it provides after-hour tutoring for boys and girls. It's from three to four. There's no fee charged for this service. Last year, they served over 1,000 youth. The tutors are certified teachers. They focus on math and reading skills. Park has the highest mobility rate in the district. It has the highest free and reduced lunch rate in the district. And because of this program, they monitor it too. They have the highest increase in reading and math scores. So, we're excited with this. We're excited with the county's partnership in funding this. And this is all, all of these contracts that I have before you are all state funding, too. I shouldn't mention it.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this grant contract with Lancaster County and the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln and Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
N is a grant contract between Lancaster County and the Child Guidance Center in the amount of $48,000 for funding of school-based therapy at North Star and Northeast Lincoln Public High Schools. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
A child, this would allow child guidance to have two therapists at North Star and Northeast, well, one therapist at both of those schools. They are, they know about trauma-informed care. It allows them to see kids when needed. So, they already have counselors in the other high schools, but this would allow them to expand to North Star and Northeast.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this grant contract. Is there any discussion? Oh, okay. Please call the roll.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
O is a grant contract between Lancaster County and Youth for Christ, Inc. in the amount of $10,000 for funding of the Parent Life Program. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016.
And this program is funded through a state grant through community aid, and this program works with pregnant and parenting teens in the schools who want the additional support. They also offer a class on Tuesday evenings where they provide transportation to the kids. They have a meal, and then they teach them different life skills, parenting kind of things.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Commissioner Wilchun, apparently you've been promoted. My condolences. Gary Aldrich, Lincoln, Nebraska. We're going to slow things down. There are things I want in the record, which means there are things I will get on the record. Item O is a grant contract between Lancaster County and Youth for Christ, aka YFC. The sponsor is Lancaster County. The grantee is Youth for Christ. Sponsor perhaps is legal for, we'll provide the cash. Grantee perhaps is legal for, we'll take the cash. The sum specified is 10K. That will not move the needle much. Ain't democracy beautiful? This is public money, county money, or state money, or federal money. I say again, government cannot be all things to all people at all times. There are limits. Resources are finite. The question then, do provisions of this contract advance a public good or the public welfare? Quote, "The purpose of this grant is to help pregnant and parenting teens and prevent them from entering the juvenile justice system." I have no quarrel with that purpose. The purpose seems compatible with a public good or the public welfare. As to the money, you have made a determination. This expenditure is prudent, justified, reasonable. I have no major quarrel with that determination. So, what is the worst that can happen? The grantee is Youth for Christ, not Youth for Yahweh or Youth for Allah. The YFC website promotes a quote, "Faith-based support, guidance through spiritual resources based on the message of Jesus Christ." Jesus Christ. It seems no others need apply. Some accept that, others do not. In a pluralistic society, it is not permissible for government to blur some boundaries. Some may confuse Youth for Christ, a nonprofit corporation, with an establishment of religion, an organized church. There be praying, and baptizing, and praying, and communion, and praying, and gospel music, and praying. So, for our Jewish, or Muslim, or Druid, or Wiccan friends, can someone, county human services, or county board, or legal shop, or chief executive, someone provide assurances there is strict and scrupulous separation. There is no and will not be an entanglement with an organized church or religion. Perhaps just read for the record number nine, Mentor Oversight, and/or number 12, Non-Discrimination. That may be sufficient.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. My understanding of this is that we're not endorsing or establishing a religion. This is basically with a nonprofit organization to provide a specific service. I'm not sure how much praying or other things are gonna be going on with this. As far as discrimination based on religious grounds, I think we have a clause in the contract. They're not able to do that, in which case they do that, their contract would be terminated.
Right, and that was section 12 of the contract that Hubert referenced, is that there's a provision that prohibits the discrimination based on race, religion, and other protected classes.
Correct, it's basically boilerplate.
Right.
Well...
And this was one that went through our Juvenile Justice Review Committee, and then, just the way that this money is handled, then it goes on to the state then to decide what gets funded and what doesn't get funded as well. But this particular issue did come up when we discussed it amongst our Juvenile Justice Review Committee, and I've had numerous conversations with Matt Schulte, who is the director of this program, in reference to how much the religious component is put into this. And he has assured me that, number one, there is no discrimination as to who comes into the program, and number two, no, they are not doing communion, rosaries, that kind of thing, so...
Oh, thank you for that clarification then. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve this grant contract. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
4P is an agreement with the Journal Star Printing Company for advertising sample ballot and absentee ballot applications. Term of the agreement is January 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve this agreement with the Journal Star Printing Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Q is a banquet contract with Green Gato Reception Center at Windsor Stables for the Lancaster County Employee Recognition Breakfast on May 24th, 2016. The county will pay a $200 room charge.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve this banquet contract with Green Gato Reception Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
R is an amendment to kind of contract C-15-2 with RDO Truck Centers for the annual requirements of construction and landfill equipment repair. Term of the amendment is from January 6th, 2016 to August 11th, 2016. Cost to the county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this amendment to the contract with RDO Truck Centers. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
S is a request from the Joint Budget Committee to provide, to approve the Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Recommendations Round 40.
Well, we had the opportunity to look at these last Thursday. The total amount allocated is, let me get to the bottom of the page, sorry, $159,432 to approximately 24 different agencies.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
Well, I appreciate the committee as you go through these. I know there's always more requests than you have money for, but I would assume you prioritize and do the best you can as far as distributing these monies.
Yes, and we had, yeah, we did have about, I wanna say 50,000 more come in than what we actually had in funding. So, yeah, it was a hard process this year. It was difficult. But we tried to stay with the priorities of what that funding was intended for. So, I think we have some really good programs this year. I'm excited to see how they go.
And the maximum amount allocated is $10,000, so we really were able to spread it out quite a bit to 24 programs, exactly, 22 programs, exactly.
And I appreciate your willingness over the years. If you felt that there were new people that could do a job better, you tried to give them a chance, too, as far as the allocation. So, I think whatever evaluation you can do as you look forward this year, why, when you always have in mind that there's more people wanting grants than there is may to go around. But I think it is a good use of those funds.
I would move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this request from the Joint Budget Committee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number five are consent items. Receive and place on file the following reports. County Attorney's Office Quarterly Report from October 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015. County Sheriff, December 2015. Senate Public Hearing for Tuesday, January 26th, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building in the matter of amending County Resolution R-13-73 to change the manner in which air quality inspections are conducted.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number six is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business on the agenda made to do at this time.
Gary Aldrich, I'm still a little bit off my stride, so if I crumple at the microphone, think nothing of it. When I attend public board body or commission and offer comments, I try very hard not be not clear. When I was here last Tuesday, I made some comments that were not clear. That was entirely my fault. I apologize for that. I, we have three computers in our house. That's probably four more than we need. One of them is downstairs in my wife's sewing area, and one of them is downstairs in my den, and one of them is upstairs, so the upstairs computer is the most convenient one. Last, Sunday before last Tuesday's meeting, I went to the board website to look at the agenda to see what was there. If there were going to be any grin and giggles, I was looking for something specific. The chief deputy salary increase, and it was there. I tried to open it. There was a link provided. Dan, does your office maintain the county board website?
On the Tuesday agendas.
Okay. In any case, there was a link there, and most of those links are powered by Adobe Reader, and the computer I was using said that it had Adobe Reader on it. So, I tried to open it to look at the documents, and it went nowhere. I thought, well, that's goofy. I tried again on Sunday to open it and look at the documents, and again, nowhere. I came back Monday, the Monday before last Tuesday's meeting, and again, opened the agenda to see if I could get to that link, and it went nowhere. And I'm thinking to myself, well, something's wrong at my end, at your end, at both ends, or nowhere in between. And then a little light went off. Ahhh. So, I went to another computer downstairs in my den, to the agenda, to the link, click, and it opened. So, it was there. It just was not available to me on the computer I was originally using. When I made those comments, I think some of the personnel thought that they may have, or there was a problem at your end, and it was not. It was entirely mine.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification.
That happens to me, too.
Number seven is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January 21st, 2016 at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 26th, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will tour Community Corrections, the Public Defender's Office, and the Benish Building, which will be the new location of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center on Tuesday, January 26th, 2016 at 10:30 a.m. or immediately following the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building regarding a request to vacate a portion of South 54th Street between Hickman Road and relocated South 54th Street. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourned the Board of Commissioners meeting. Please call the roll.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
The Board of Commissioners meeting is adjourned, and let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 10 minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, January 12th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approved the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudkins.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Abstain.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention.
Number two is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. And these include Allen Chapel SDA Church, Central States Conference, States Conference, Bryan Medical Center, First Evangelical Covenant Church, First Free Methodist Church, Great Plains Annual Conference of the United Methodist Church, Nebraska Crop Improvement Association, Oak Lake Evangelical Free Church, Sacred Heart Church, Sisasa Shine, Sisters of Mary, Queen of Mercy, and Trinity Lutheran Church and School.
Okay, this is a public hearing regarding this. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in support of these tax exemption applications? In opposition, or in a neutral position, and seeing none, close the public hearing.
I would move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve these tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization, business, non-agenda, may do so at this time.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Hudgens.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.